But I'm just gonna go around, if you can say and spell your name and what district you represent. That way, we get it absolutely right and Meredith gets some practice. So I'll start in the front.
Amanda Sandoval, A-M-A-N-D-A-S-A-N-D-O-V-A-L, City Council District 1, Northwest Denver.
Jamie Torres, J-A-M-I-E-T-O-R-R-E-S, Denver City Council District 3, Denver's West Side.
Candy C. DeBaca, C-A-N-D-I-C-D-E-B-A-C-A, Denver's District 9, the East Side.
Amanda Sawyer, A-M-A-N-D-A-S-A-W-Y-E-R, District 5.
Chris Hines, C-H-R-I-S-H-I-N-D-S, Denver's Perfect 10.
How did that work for audio?
Good.
Good. Okay, so like I said, I was gonna go slow so that Meredith could not have shoulder problems later today.
For the rest of her life.
Yeah. Let's start with, I'm gonna start with current events, and we'll start with a show of hands for this first one. Who of the five new council members here think that Park Hill Golf Course should always stay a golf course? Raise your hand if you think that.
A golf course or green space.
Well, so, let's start with golf course. Do you think it should, because the city believes it has contractually that that piece of land always has to have an 18-hole golf course. Do you think 18-hole golf course should remain where Park Hill Golf Course currently is? No one raised their hand. How many think it should be developed? No one raised their hand. So, open space is, is everyone in agreement with open space? Okay. So, does anyone think any building, apartment, any kind of development should go besides green space and places where people can go with their pets and family? Does anything else belong there?
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
Okay. As a new contingent, do you feel that you need to be a block of five because you started at the same time? Does anyone feel passionately about, like, the camaraderie that you guys have together coming in at the same time, Jamie?
I think the latter is absolutely true. There's a camaraderie here for all of us who are brand-new at this. For me personally, I think there'll be any number of blocks, alliances, partnerships, collaborations, but it'll depend on the issue.
Anyone disagree with that? Okay. I'm gonna start with the idea of Rafael Espinoza. He was, he seemed to be the sole voice of opposition. Do you want to be that on this council as his replacement?
The sole voice of opposition?
Yeah.
Not always, no. I would like to work in opposition. I'm not for everything, definitely, but I also think there's a different way of going about doing that. And I know he was very passionate. I was his chief of staff for three and a half years, so I helped him with a lot of those speeches he gave, and I absolutely believe in a lot of the things that he believed in. Like, we were talking not long ago, would we actually vote different? And there was only one issue that we would've voted different on, and that was the music festival at the golf course. He voted yes, and I would've voted no. But other than that, we would've actually voted the same, very similar.
On that same line, Candy, how do you not be the sole voice of opposition? If you have disagreements with the way council has been so far, up to now, what do you need to do so that it's not 10-1, Candy's the Rafael Espinoza?
Well, I think the circumstances are different, and so, we have a city right now where we're part of a much larger movement that was really demanding some checks and balances in this city. And so, what the voters said and what we said through our races, through these historic runs, was that we need to make sure that we're growing responsibly. And being the adult in the room sometimes looks like being the lone voice, and I'm perfectly okay with that, but I don't expect to see that as frequently as we saw it previously. I think that you have people here who were forced to run because of the conditions in our city. And so, I expect to see a lot of the people who were newly elected in different configurations with people who are incumbents, making sure that we do hold the administration accountable. And we're, I think there's more adults in the room, honestly.
Amanda, you ousted a sitting councilperson as well, just like Candy. Do you have a responsibility now to be 180 degrees opposite of what Mary Beth was?
No, I don't feel that I have that responsibility. I think, you know, what we need to remember here is that the people of Denver voted us in, right? And we need to make the decisions that are right for the people of Denver. And sometimes, that's gonna be the same vote that the previous councilperson who held this seat would've made, and sometimes it's gonna be different. But it's not, I don't feel the pressure to be different from Councilwoman Sussman. I feel the pressure to represent our community to the best of my ability and to make sure that every Monday night when I go home, I can hold my head high and I'm proud of the job that I've done that day.
Chris, you represent a diverse district, different from the diversity of, like, we could talk Candy's district is way diverse, but yours is in a strangely different way with Cherry Creek Country Club, and then you go into Camp Hill. What's the biggest issue right now in the district you represent?
Well, so, I also unseated an incumbent running for reelection, and to your first question about should we be the lone dissenting voice, I wouldn't agree with that. I think that ultimately, our job in City Council is to create relationships where we effectively would be in the majority. But I think the biggest issue right now for the city and District 10 is that people don't feel like they're heard. And I think even there's a conversation that will be in our first City Council meeting tonight. And I think that, you know, if we install a, if we're considering installing a stop sign or a traffic light, there's a long process, a very established embedded process that includes a lot of public input. There've been other groups like Blueprint and the Far Northeast Denver Area Plan that has had a lot of input and stakeholder engagement. And we wanna make sure that people feel heard going forward, and that we, as citizens of the city, have a voice, have input, and frankly, you know, have representation.
This may be awkward to ask Amanda and Jamie, but to everybody, because you beat incumbents and because you were elected, do you feel that there's a mandate to change the direction Denver has been going the last council term?
So, in Northwest Denver, I don't think that there's necessarily like a huge change, but even when Rafael was in the race, there were three people running against him already, right? It's more of the approach. It's people feel disenfranchised. People feel that their voice is not being heard, and they feel like they were disregarded. And that's unfortunate, because I was in that office working, and I know that was the opposite of what Rafael's intentions were.
But why, so, I, and I'll give, I know Amanda, you kinda perked up when I asked that question too, but there's a process in place when it comes to development, rezoning, where people can come and be heard, or sometimes there's community meetings. What is it that needs to change that will get people to say, "I am being heard," versus, "Oh, I didn't know I could go to that, therefore, I'm not being heard"?
So, I think part of that is looking at the charter and figuring out how people can be more notified. So, there's a new ordinance that was passed where the people impacted by a rezoning get actually a mail piece information about the rezoning that's taking place. So, I wanna look deeper into the charter to figure out where those places are where we can actually bring more notification to the people who are being impacted by development. And also, I think that it's really important that community planning and development, look at their processes. I'm gonna be really pushing on them, because as a councilperson, there is a whole side that we're not part of. They go in for their rezoning pre-application, and then if we're not notified from that department, that application gets submitted, and then we sit in a quasi-dutual instance where we can't have robust conversations. And that I will not allow in Northwest Denver, because we have good ways to negotiate. If you're able to do, if you're able to know when a developer's going to re-go for a rezoning, notify the neighborhood and hopefully maybe work out a deal, and put myself in the middle.
I wanna go back. Did anybody else, do you feel like you have to change the direction of Denver just because you were elected?
It's opening access for me. Having come from the Office of Immigrant and Refugee Affairs, I've seen how difficult it is to ensure that meetings are multilingual, that they're physically accessible, and they're held during hours where working families can get to them. That's how we increase working family access, and that's what I'll be focusing on.
Amanda?
I do think that, you know, I definitely feel pressure from the media, from the community, from all different sides to be different, to create change. And, you know, I think that the very fact that I won the election and that I'm here today has already started that conversation. So, you know, it's gonna be hard, because I think sometimes, you know, people are gonna expect me to vote one way, and I will vote a different way because it's the right thing to do. And, you know, that's gonna, that's gonna be a difficult place to be, but the responsibility is too great, you know, to not do that.
Chris and Candy, when it comes to development, where is the line? Where does, where does the buck stop with development? Especially if the people in this room, or even the mayor's office, are like, look, it's like, all we do is, people come to us with proposals to change the zoning, the rules are what they are, if they meet these rules, it's okay to go. So, if, with you now on the council, what's, where does the line drawn?
So, I think that a growing city is a healthy city. I think that, you know, we need, we need some development, you know, to fix our affordable housing crisis, to create sidewalks that aren't busted and broken will need development. We need a protected bike network, not just a bike path, but a network so that people have the freedom to get from A to B and feel safe while doing it. And I think the, it talks, I think it's important for us to have values as elected officials, and I would propose this as a value statement, that development should happen for the city, not to the city. And when I've talked, I've talked with tens of thousands of people on the campaign trail, and people kept saying that that's what they want. They're okay with development, but we shouldn't be prisoners in our own neighborhood. And people feel that way, because there's sidewalk closures, there's construction equipment just on the grass or in front of their house, or, and so, again, we need to make sure that people can walk around their own block, and that we have, as we're growing for Denver tomorrow, the people who live here today can still get around their wonderful city.
So, would you be okay with development in your district, as long as the sidewalks stay open, parking doesn't become an issue, the buildings are providing enough so that it doesn't overflow into the neighborhood? Like, when you say "for" the city...
Yeah. So, it is a value statement. So, like, what does freedom mean, or what does safety mean? But the general idea is, we, as we're building Denver for tomorrow, we need to make sure that Denver stays open for people today. So, to your question about sidewalks, definitely, we should have sidewalk access. I've already talked with the mayor about it, I've already talked with the lobby about it, and I've already talked with construction companies, and that will be one of my top priorities in the first 100 days, is to make sure that we have our city back and that we can get around our city while we're building for tomorrow.
Candy, to the development question, where does the buck stop?
So, for me, it's about who's driving the conversation. Right now, developers are driving the conversation of what's happening in our city, and I think that we need to give the power back to the people. We're creating a city that's not affordable or sustainable, and so, if we don't have the infrastructure to accommodate the new growth, then I think we have a duty as City Council to make sure that we don't continue to put the cart before the horse, and that we're looking after the long-term interests of our city and making sure that we can accommodate the growth that's happening and that it's serving the residents who are already here, not the ones who some developers would like to bring and see here later, but the ones who are already here.
Giving a quick break to Meredith. Does any, by a show of hands, does anyone feel that Denver needs to follow what Lakewood just did by asking voters for a growth limit? So, how...
I don't think that's up to us to decide. You know, if voters want to put that on the ballot, it's up to the voters to do that. And I don't think that's a referendum that should come from City Council. If citizens want it, citizens have the right to do that and vote on it themselves, but I don't think that that's something that with a broad brush, we can do or should do as a body.
Jamie, when I was asking about sidewalks being open, parking being available, what, is there good and bad development? Or you, would you be pro-development, anti-development if we were to put a label on you?
It is the right development for people, what people need. It's, and I hate to be kind of neither here nor there when it comes to that, but when it's good development, it's because we need it. When it's bad development, it's putting more into a bucket that isn't even being used right now, and I'm thinking largely of luxury development. What we need is housing that our city employees can afford, that our teachers can afford, that even we could afford. I couldn't buy my house now if I wanted to. And we're sitting on City Council. So, it's gotta be responsible and with folks in mind who wanna stay in the neighborhoods that they've helped build, but who are on the precipice of not being able to.
How do you do that now with Sun Valley? With the, I mean, is there anything that you can still do in your district?
Sun Valley's actually a beautiful example of how it can and should be done. What we're doing is redesigning, replacing one-for-one public housing, 300-plus units, adding affordable 300-plus units, and adding market. What we're doing is making a community that was exclusively low-income, multi-income, which means you also have opportunity to redesign roadways, to think differently about nonprofit space, about commercial space, and we might finally get a closer grocery store or market in West Denver, where I'm three miles from one in my house.
This one's gonna be, I'm gonna go slow again for Meredith. This is as best as I can for a one-word or short answer. The number-one issue that you believe Denver faces today is what? I'll start with, oh, we'll go, we'll go around clockwise here with Candy. So, the number-one issue facing Denver is what?
Lack of affordability, cost of living.
A true understanding of equity.
I'd say lack of affordability.
The relationship between land use and transit infrastructure.
So, how do you address affordability? What, is it throwing more money? Is affordability low-income or middle-income people who, like you say, Jamie, like, you couldn't afford your home today? So, what does affordable mean? When you talk about affordable housing, what does it mean and how do you fix it?
I think it means when you're taking entitlement and you're adding entitlement to a piece of land, and you're paying into the linkage fee fund instead of building, that's irresponsible development. You should not be able to buy, kick the can down the road for another developer to have to build their way out. You should be able to, if you have, so, in Northwest Denver, in the Sunnyside area, we have entitlement that's mixed-use to two stories, but the plan calls for eight, and people can just pay out in the linkage fee. That's not helping our cause. They should be building the affordable units as they're getting entitlement.
What about the argument, I've done stories on that. What about the argument that money paid into the affordable housing fee offers more units than would have been required of one developer?
I don't agree with that. I think that it's irresponsible development. I think that it's too easy. It's cheaper to build, to pay into the fee. It's just easy. You just write a check, and you're not being held accountable to any of your constituency or the residents of Denver. So, you can write a check, you can build the units, and then you can move on, instead of actually being a responsible developer and having that first-time homebuyer or first-time renter who can afford to live in the neighborhood that they grew up in, stay in their neighborhood. I absolutely do not agree that it's cheaper to do it a different way.
And there's a bigger issue when it comes to the linkage fee. The linkage fee is incredibly low for a city of our size, and that is part of what's allowing our developers to not carry their fair share of the burden of growth. And so, I think we need to increase that linkage fee. If we can't put any mandates, that's the closest we can get to basically disincentivizing, exploiting communities.
Amanda?
Yeah, no, I was just, I agree with everything that's been said here, and I think that there's a valuable point to make, which is that that's a state-level concern, right? It's on the state to give municipalities back the rights to some of this stuff, and until that, you know, to provide us more options and more flexibility on ways to manage our affordability crisis. And until that happens, you know, we are, there are some limited things that we can do, but without movement from the state on that, I don't think that we're ever gonna be able to build our way out of this.
Chris?
So, to build on that, specifically, it's the Telluride decision, right? So, it's a form of rent control, or the Colorado State Supreme Court said that requiring developers to install affordable housing is a form of rent control, and I'm very interested in working with our partners at the state to address the Telluride decision, because it doesn't take an MBA in finance to know that if two options are supposed to be the same, as in installing affordable housing or paying into a fee, yet 100% of the time one option is being picked, then they're not actually the same.
I wanna say with Chris for this next one, I noticed there's an addition to this room for mobility purposes. For you, that ramp back there, what, there's a survey recently that Denver was like the number one or three most walkable city, and there's argument whether that's true or not. From someone who has to see it more closely than anyone else, what is the immediate need that you could fix this year, and how does it impact a wider community?
So, I'm super excited, because I am one of the barrier breakers. Colorado's had a rich recent history of electing the first openly gay governor, the first Jewish governor, the first Latina speaker in the nation, Speaker to Iran. We've had the first African-American from Colorado elected to Congress, and I am the first person in the history of Denver to serve City Council or in any elected office using a wheelchair for mobility. So, I'm really excited to be part of the barrier breaking that's happening in Colorado, and I wanna thank you, Colorado, for your appetite and your willingness to break barriers. I think the biggest thing, number one, is to create awareness. We, so Colorado back in the 70s was, RTD, the city of Denver, was the first transit system in the nation that was fully wheelchair-accessible. And I wanna celebrate that, celebrate our history as we continue to move forward and grow a brighter future. And like Chariot as an example, which was a test earlier this year, only one of its vehicles was wheelchair-accessible. And obviously, Chariot is not here today, but I wanna make sure that we continue to move forward with equity for everyone, regardless of who you are, where you live, where you've come from, or, you know, the color of your skin, or who you love, or your ability or disability.
So, is it the transit aspect or sidewalks?
Yeah, yeah, so, and then maybe that's why I picked the relationship between housing and transportation. But yeah, we need to, we need to make sure that we can get around our city today, we need to fix our busted and broken sidewalks, and again, people should have the freedom to get from A to B and feel safe while doing it, no matter who you are.
Should the city pay to fix that, since it's gonna take so long for the homeowners and the people whose property it sits by to fix it?
So, Nine News has already, already has me on record as saying, I think it should be the city's responsibility.
Okay.
Can I just point out also, just to sort of build off of that, that, you know, mobility and transit infrastructure is not funded. There's no dedicated source of funding in the city for that. And so, one of the things that we can do this year is find a dedicated source of funding and bring it to the voters. The issue with that is recognizing the cost of living is so high in our city, and how do we be respectful and cognizant of the people who live here and the fact that they feel nickled and dimed by everything that gets added on, every fee that's added on, every bit of sales tax that, you know, even though those are going towards things that are incredibly important in our city. So, it's a balance that we're gonna have to figure out how that works, but I think, you know, we're all really excited for that challenge.
I don't wanna keep you from eating lunch too much longer. Does any, everyone has met with, or Mayor Hancock has met with all of you prior to today? Is that true? Someone's shaking their head now. Candy shaking her head now?
I have not met with him, no.
Okay. Did you know that he had, I had just read somewhere that he had met with the incoming count, but not with you. So, now knowing that, it's probably an explosive question.
He's got a meeting to have.
Do you wanna meet with him one-on-one?
Absolutely, absolutely.
What would that, what do you want him to know?
I think that he knows quite well what to expect from me. I've had a long relationship with Mayor Michael Hancock. He was my first boss, a friend and a mentor for a long time, and he knows where I stand on all of these issues. And now that we're elected, I'm part of a body that has been exclusively designed and put in place to be what minimal checks and balances we can have, and so, I know that that's what he expects, and that's what I'm committed to doing, and that's what voters elected me to do.
Would anyone like to share what that meeting was like with the mayor?
It was frank?
It was, it was honest and open. I think having been in the city for 18 years, I come with a unique perspective on community access and community engagement, and some of the things that we have struggled to put in place become some of my key interests and priorities.
Chris?
Yeah, I just, because this is related, I just wanted to share, I had one ask of the mayor, and the ask was to reach out to construction companies and make sure that we have additional pedestrian access around construction sites. So, I feel that strongly about making sure that we all have access.
I let him know the priorities of District 1, and that not every time am I going to agree. And there's gonna be times where we need each other's help, and there's gonna be times where we're on opposite ends, and I hope to do that in a respectful fashion, and that I'm gonna need, I want to, one of the first things I wanna do is, at one time, City Council used to have district offices, and in Northwest Denver, I find that access coming down here is hard for people to do and for people to get to. There's too many barriers to entry to get to me. And so, one of the first things I wanna do is I wanna find a place in the community where I can go and I can work and I can be part of my community. And he actually brought up, when he was in City Council, that he spent Monday, Tuesday, Wednesdays down here, and some of the best days that he had were in his district office on Thursdays and Fridays, and he had actually forgotten that. We don't have that anymore, and so, it was a good reminder.
Before we wrap up, I wanna ask, we've asked this of, I think we asked this of the mayoral candidates, that you're, it's just Denver. This state's a pretty big state, and we're just Denver. The decisions made here sometimes flow out to other communities, just like my question of Lakewood, something they decided came to a question here. Do you care about the perception of what you guys do here as seen outside of the city limits? And does that play into any of your thinking that decisions you make here will have a ripple effect, so you have to make decisions beyond Denver?
I think we need to take that responsibility more seriously. A lot of times, we've had councils that really feel like their hands are tied behind their back, because certain issues are to be legislated at the state level, and they've failed to take a leadership role in setting the tone for what happens in Colorado, when we very much have the power to set that tone and have set it in the past in a lot of different ways. And so, I think that that is absolutely a consideration with every decision we make. We affect the entire ecosystem, the entire state, and so, that's an opportunity, an incredible opportunity for us to be bold, for us to be responsible, and for us to be cognizant of the long-term needs of our state and make decisions in a way that affects our state right here through our locale.
And Amanda, you were shaking your head.
Yeah, well, it's funny, you know, that you asked that question, because one of the vote that's coming up tonight about Pennya Boulevard, right? Because our airport is the number-one revenue driver in the state, and it's number, you know, the fifth-biggest airport in the country. And so, when we are talking about decisions that are related to the airport, we are, we have to take not only other counties in the state of Colorado into consideration, but also people who are potentially driving here or whatever from other states. You know, because people come from all over to use our airport, and it's a part of Denver, which gives us a responsibility to consider those other things sometimes.
Is tonight a final vote on that? Because the first vote was last week.
Right.
It was postponed.
Okay.
It's a resolution, it only needs one vote.
Right.
Got it.
And I think that it's important to acknowledge that in Colorado, Denver's unique, we're the only city and county, right? So, other jurisdictions, you have a land use commissioner, and then you have council. So, where we play both, we're actually the land use commissioners and the council. So, absolutely, people look to us to lead the charge because of the unique structure that our municipality is.
Before I ask the last question, I have one more direct question to Candy. Chief of Staff is Lisa Calderon.
Yes.
Will I be able to determine if, I should phrase it this way... Will I be able to determine if, I should phrase it this way. Do I need to be convinced in the people who come in here and the voters that you are not doing the bidding of Lisa Calderon, who wanted to be mayor, and trying to filter that through you on that dais? Are you going to be doing what Lisa Calderon wanted to do as mayor?
I think one of the main reasons I supported Lisa for mayor is because of how aligned we were on many different issues. We live in the same community, we've fought many of the same fights together and have always been on the same side. And so alignment is an important part of picking a staff. And I picked Lisa specifically because I knew that she stood for what I believe in and will stand behind me and help me serve our community. But anybody who knows you, who knows me, will let you guys know that Candy isn't the kind of person that takes the lead from other people. I am fully capable of making my decisions, always have, always will, and my staff is committed to supporting those decisions.
I'm going to end on a question about the mayor. If you could give him one piece of advice for the final four years of his term, what is your piece of advice? And I'll start with Jamie.
With me?
Yeah.
Be bold and try really innovative things, because there is little time to waste for families that really need it.
Candy?
Our community gave him another chance, and they did so because he made a lot of promises to essentially repent for what has not been done. And I think it would be very wise for him to make sure that he fulfills the promises he made during this final campaign trail.
To Amanda here.
Just to remember the people who don't have a voice. I think a lot of times, if you have 1,000 people and 10% make the most noise, the 10% get the solutions that they're looking for and where the 90% don't. And so in Northwest Denver, there are a lot of people who feel like their voices have not been heard by this administration. And so don't forget the little people who go to work every day and work really hard to make our city great.
Chris?
I'm really excited to work with the mayor. My piece of advice is that we're not going to be pushovers.
And Amanda?
I think my piece of advice would be to recognize that this council is going to be very different. It's a different group of personalities, it's a different group of agendas, it's a different, it was a different election cycle that brought us in. And so we are going to need to find a way to work together and collaborate positively moving forward. And that's going to take a little more effort, I think, than maybe has happened in the past.
Well, yeah, what did you, I've already forgotten.
I have a question for you.
For me?
Yeah. When we were setting up, you were just explaining to Chris about the chill that you had this morning, and you guys are all like, new, and can you just tell Marshall like how it felt to experience that? Wait, just kidding, editing, can you ask that?
Yes, oh, no. I forgot about that too. No, she, and we had talked about this beforehand, and I spaced it. So I can't forget what happened outside, I was in the air conditioning, so.
I knew.
Yeah, yeah, okay. What, was it different than what you'd expect, what you thought it was going to be, Amanda?
You know, I'm not sure what I thought it was going to be, but it was, it was absolutely amazing. It was really incredible. I just, you know, between fanning myself and the heat, I had this moment where I realized, like, oh my gosh, I mean, this, this is happening. We're here, and this is like so cool. And we're, you know, it's such an amazing opportunity. It's such, I feel so blessed to be here, and it just kind of all came together, the gravity of the office and the responsibility that we have to the people and the fact that we get the honor of being here at all. It's just sort of like, all came at one minute together while I was sitting out there, and it was really special. It was really special.
There's no going back now.
No.
Next time you're going through an inauguration, is it going to be in the sun?
No.
Please, I hope not.
There's any power to change that.
I think every administration has to do one in the sun.
Thank you all for your time. I hope I didn't keep you too long, but I appreciate it.
It was nice to meet you.
Before you move, I'm just going to take a quick picture.
Oh, yeah, I wanted to get a picture.
For Twitter?
Twitter?
Marshall, do you want to be in it?
No, 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 it's okay.
It's like high school.
It did feel like graduation today, right?